Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to Prattville City Council Tuesday, September first, 2015. Six P.M. city council meeting. I'm going to ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for my invocation.
May I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we come as umless as we know how this afternoon. Lord, thanking you for life, health, and strength at this moment, right now. We give you the glory, we give you the honor, and we give you the praise. We pray, oh Lord, for every individual that's assembled here, and we pray that you'll guide our tongues and guide our minds as we make decisions for the betterment of this city. Now, Lord, be with those who are bereaved at this time, those who are sick and shut in, and those who are fighting in harm's way, Lord. Protect them and be with them and be with their families. When we leave here tonight, Lord, we pray that you'll direct us safely to our destination. We give you the glory, we give you the honor, and we give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, Carter Row.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month, September, is decisiveness, the ability to recognize key factors and finalize difficult decisions. A good character trait for the month. At this time, I will ask for approval of a minutes from public hearing in the city council meeting on August eighteenth, 2015. We motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak about tonight's agenda, please come to the microphone, please.
Item one. It's House 101 North Chestnut.
Yes, sir, sir. I know some people know you, some may not. State your name and address for the record, please.
Al Bo, five twelve Compostry. Progress has continued on the building. It's slow. Have a bit of an excuse. Had to pull off that job to go work on Dr. Wine Rib's Oval Office. Had a renter moving in and had to do some changes in that building. So, and then when we finished that, it was a little too hot for an old man to be outside working. But we're back on it. We've got siding on the, about half of the building that will be re-siding. And we'll continue to work on it.
Thank you. Is that all you have to say, sir? Does anyone have any questions or comment for Ms. Booth? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor, you have a report.
Yes, if I might, if I may, for the point, please.
Yes.
If at this time, if I can ask, Jay Gray, can come up here with Dale Gandy. While they're coming up here, I'd ask, like to ask Jay, does he recognize any relatives up here on the wall behind us? Your great-granddaddy, okay. The good-looking one.
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought that was a small, little trivial information that I just found out a little bit ago. And now this gentleman, if you ever do happen to shake his hand, be ready, because he does have a grip. But I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dale Gandy.
Good evening. How are you all doing? Want to introduce Jay to y'all. He, uh, he's our new foreman in the wastewater department on the collection system side. He comes from us when we tuck them. He's already state certified through ADM and brings with us a lot of experience. And we're glad to have him here and see a lot of great things that he's going to do in that division of wastewater.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to come and work at Prattville. It feels good to be back home again and a lot of great things you want to come about doing this.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Congratulations.
Amazing little history that we pick up from time to time, which we're asked to, we're going to introduce David Morgan. He's with our Parks and Recs and I was, but he's, his family comes first. And so maybe he'll be coming to the meeting a little bit later on and maybe I'll introduce him to, to you guys before we move further on into the agenda. But, but just to move right on along in my report, you know, the city of Prattville and LPGA, in my opinion, has really, there's been a little bit of a love fest there between the two organizations. And now it's sort of also known as the Yokohama Tire LPGA and classic. I think it's been a huge success. I want to thank everybody involved. Now, that success was due to our dedicated employees, hundreds of volunteers, our sister city Montgomery, the River Region, RTJ Golf, their staff, tournament staff, and our title sponsor Yokohama Tire itself. None of this would have been possible without the foresight of those who came before us that helped establish the footprint and make the investment in Capital Hill years and years ago. But, you know, many couldn't see the vision at that time, but now Prattville is in the spotlight internationally because of a lot of that dedication and foresight. And Mr. Wood, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, you were the one and only council, sitting counselor up here now that was on at that point in time. So thank you for that, for that foresight on that. But moving along, Labor Day will be observed on September seventh. There's an, there's an adjusted sanitation schedule for next week, and that info is available to everyone on our city website. We'll also honor our Patriots' Day on Friday, September the eleventh at Fire Station Three. We ask, hope that everyone be in place by seven forty-six when the ceremony begins. Hope to join you all there. On Saturday, September twelfth, we will celebrate Prattville's one hundred and seventy-sixth anniversary with a street concert by here, beside the Heritage Park. The Brian Jackson Band will entertain us, and I hope you'll all join me, join us there. Resolution three, that's the drainage project. It's, it's, involves a state revolving fund. I think this is a good deal for the city of Prattville. That project is approximately an eight-hundred thousand dollar project. I think what we're being asked upon is four-hundred thousand, so it's basically a half-price deal. This is, you know, one of the things, I guess I have mentioned many, many times before about the city of Prattville, we're a mechanized, service-oriented organization. We're here to perform projects, and this is most certainly, in my opinion, a much-needed project. If we move forward on that tonight, I and so many other citizens of Prattville, partners of Prattville would definitely appreciate that. Did you know that a roadmap is a detailed plan or explanation that guides you to setting standards or determining a course of action? With that said, I will hand each of you later on tonight as you exit a proposed roadmap for our 2016 budget. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact me, the appropriate department head, human resources, or finance to answer any questions. I look forward to answering any of these questions, and I request that this place, this budget be placed on the next council, council agenda. With that said, unless there's any other question, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comment for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a report on council special committees. Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir. I have a report from the wastewater committee. We met Monday morning, August twenty-fourth, to hear a presentation from Greg Thompson, Engineers of the South, concerning an overview of the proposed upgrade to the Pine Creek facility. This facility is approaching eighty percent of its daily capacity. All processing aspects of this facility will be upgraded in moving from a capacity of three-point zero million gallons per day up to five-point seven million gallons per day. The preliminary estimated cost in today's dollars is around twenty-three million dollars for Phase One. Phase Two will provide larger-sized pipes in our collector's system to get the affluent to the plant. The committee will meet later this month to get a rough engineering estimate of Phase Two cost. It's currently estimated that the engineering plans for Phase One will cost approximately one-point-one million dollars and take approximately one year to draw these plans. Allowing time for bidding, award of bid, and mobilization, the earliest we could start construction would be fifteen to eighteen months from the time the project is approved by the council. Construction is estimated to take between eighteen and twenty-four months. So from start to finish, this will be a three-to-four-year project. When it's completed, it's anticipated this addition will meet our East Prattville growth needs for twenty-five to thirty years. As more preliminary information is available, it will be shared with the council. With cash on hand to pay for engineering drawings in the near future, I expect you will be asked for your support of this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Striplin. Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir. The street committee met August thirty-first yesterday to review our paving project again after the bids were received. We are, we are requesting that we vote down resolution number, item number four tonight, and there'll be a resolution from the floor to rebid the project, scaling it back a little bit and reducing the cost.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. The Public Safety Committee met on Friday, August twenty-first, 2015, at nine A.M. We discussed the budget for the Police Department for fiscal year 2016. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Whiteside. Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go into our agenda. Item number one, is to declare a structure located at 101 North Chestnut Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance. It's been held from our May fifth, May nineteenth, and our June second, 2015 council meetings. We're here discussions.
Mr. President.
Counselor Striplin.
I move that we hold this to September fifteenth, 2015.
We have a motion on the floor to hold until September fifteenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item will be held for two weeks till our next meeting. Item number two is a resolution to set public hearing to declare various weeds and lots to be a public nuisance in order near abatement per Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is interest to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for right rats, mice, snakes, mosquitoes, and other vermin. Number two may cause the further spread of weeds. Three may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And four may cause, may also pose fire, fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas Section eleven dash sixty-seven dash one of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, permits the city council of the city of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown gra, grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Police Department code enforcement officer has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. Two oh five Edgewood Avenue, one thirty-four Thames Drive. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed addresses to be a public nuisance. And the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Todd County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the city council of the city of Prattville at the public hearing at six P.M. on October sixth, 2015, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to the owners of said property. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number three is a resolution to authorize the mayor to submit an application to ADM for CWSRF project numbers CS zero one zero two five four dash zero two Silver Hills North Drainage Canal Restoration at an estimated net cost to the city of four-hundred thousand dollars, including engineering costs. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville, Alabama, has identified a need to restore the Silver Hills North Drainage Canal. And whereas Section twenty-two dash thirty-four dash one, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended, and regulations in ADM Administrative Code, Chapter three thirty-five dash eleven dash one authorize the making of loans to aid in financing the cost of construction of necessary wastewater, stormwater treatment. And whereas the Silver Hills North Drainage Canal Restoration Project is an eligible project. And whereas the city desires to retain Civil Southeast to provide preliminary and construction engineering services for said project in the event the application is approved. And whereas Section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-one A three, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. And whereas the city shall seek reimbursement of CWSRF funds for all necessary engineering fees paid from city funds in the event the application is approved. And whereas said project shall be a budgeted expenditure for the Engineering Department in fiscal year 2016. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville as follows. One, that Mayor Bill Gillespie Junior is hereby authorized to file an application for a loan to be made by the Alabama Water Pollution Control Authority on behalf of the city of Prattville. Two, that Mayor Bill Gillespie Junior is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the city of Prattville and is authorized to file all necessary documents required by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management in connection with this application. Three, that certified copies of the resolution will be included as a part of the application to be submitted to the department. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the city of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the city of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number four is award bid number fifteen dash zero zero six to Mid-South Paving Incorporated for street improvements that are cost not to exceed eight-hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville has a need to upgrade the paving of several streets within the city limits. And whereas the Engineering Department of the city of Prattville has drafted specification and let bids for this project. And whereas two bids for said project were open on August twenty-fourth, 2015, at two P.M. in city council chambers. And whereas Mid-South Paving Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder at a cost not to exceed eight-hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And whereas said project shall be a budgeted expenditure for the fiscal year 2016 Capital Projects and Special Revenue Fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby awards bid number fifteen dash oh oh six at a cost not to exceed eight-hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars for said street improvements, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2016 Budget Capital Projects and Special Revenue Fund. Be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the city of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the city of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify likewise. And this item does not pass. We do have a substitute resolution from the floor concerning this item. So at this time, we're going to insert that substitute resolution, if that's okay. Counselor Brown, will you read substitute?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville has a need to upgrade the paving of several streets within the city limits. And whereas the Engineering Department of the city of Prattville has drafted specifications and let bids for this project. And whereas two bids for the, for said project, this is the same resolution, isn't it? Okay. Whereas two bids for said project were open on August twenty-fourth, 2015, at two P.M. in the city council chambers. And whereas all bids received were in excess of funds available for said street improvement project. And whereas the city of Prattville reserved the right to reject all bids. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby rejects all bids received for bid number fifteen dash oh oh six for said street improvements. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the Engineering Department shall reduce the scope of the street improvement project and that said project shall be rebid. So bid, so moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second. This being a resolution brought from the floor, according to our rules, they must be suspended in order to be considered. Do we have a motion to suspend?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have now been suspended. Will there be any further discussion on the resolution from the floor? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution has been adopted. Item number five is an ordinance to amend Chapter nine, Section nine, point three, point two of the City of Prattville Personnel Policy and Guidelines into name legal holidays for the city of Prattville. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville that Chapter nine, Section nine point three, point two of the City of Prattville Personnel Policies and Guidelines shall be amended as follows. Holidays. The Human Resources Department shall post a list of council-approved holidays at the beginning of each fiscal year. All full-time employees are eligible for holiday pay. Holidays that fall on Saturdays shall be observed on Friday, and those that fall on Sundays shall be observed on Monday. Holiday pay. If an eligible employee is required to work on a city-scheduled holiday, the employee shall be paid for the hours worked. All employees who do not work on the holiday shall be paid holiday pay at their regular daily rate of pay. Holiday pay hours shall be the same as the regularly scheduled work shift. Holiday pay shall not count as hours worked when determining overtime pay or compensation time in lieu of overtime pay. To be eligible for holiday pay, an employee must be present at work or on approved leave for the workday immediately preceding and following the paid holiday. Holiday pay shall not be paid to any employee in a non-pay status. Any employee who is on approved sick or vacation leave during a holiday shall be charged with holiday pay and shall not be charged for sick or vacation leave. Be it further ordained that the following legal holidays shall be designated for the city of Prattville. Veterans Holiday, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving Day, Friday following Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior, Robert E. Lee's birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, and one floating holiday at the employee supervisor's discretion and with prior approval. This change, this change shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, by Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance of permanent nature, the rules must be suspended also on it. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. We'll be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance is adopted. Item number six is an ordinance also to surplus one vehicle from the Police Department. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Police Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. A two thousand and five Chevrolet Impala. Be it further ordained, the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govsteel.com and that the proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second. This item also, the rules must be suspended in order to be considered tonight. We have a motion. We have a motion to suspend. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. We'll be in a discussion on ordinance number six. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance has been adopted. That exhausts our agenda. At this time, we ask that there be anyone like to make comments to the council at this time, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
I'm John Lee Finnegan, two-eleven, Dear Trace, and I'm coming before you to ask for an ordinance or a change to an ordinance that will address people parking on their lawns. I have a little bit of act history. I've done this before. Back in February seventeenth, oh nine, I became, I came before the council, and shortly thereafter, I received a copy of Section eighteen fifty-one regarding parking, and it does not address this issue. I again came before the council on April seventh, oh nine, requesting the same thing. That same night, the Montgomery Council, excuse me, the Montgomery Area Council passed an aggressive ordinance about citizens parking on the lawns to take effect on six-one oh nine, and I have a copy of that ordinance. A six-nine Montgomery advertiser article then stated, within eight days of that passing, eighty-five front yard parking, parkers were ticketed. At the March second, twenty-ten council meeting, I asked again about having the ordinance to include cars on the, on yards. At the five-four-ten meeting, in closing comments portion, Councilman Dean Argo, excuse me, if I may read that, hold on. The closing comments, Councilman President Argo stated he will begin working on an ordinance to prohibit citizens from parking on their front lawns. He further requested the Public Safety Committee consider issues of concern regarding the proposed ordinance. I then just printed off today the ordinance that has been renumbered, and it's exactly, almost verbatim, of the previous one that I had picked up back in oh nine. So I am coming before you to ask that that be reconsidered. I have people in my neighborhood that are doing it, several cars. I'm sure that if you drive around, you will see that. And I just, I just don't think it's attractive. It doesn't sit, it doesn't make the city look good. It really and truly doesn't. And especially when there is, there is, excuse me, I always get so nervous. There are driveways, there's availability of street parking, et cetera. So I would like to, to really consider maybe amending this newest ordinance and including parking on the lawn. And if you'd like the Montgomery Council one that they passed, I'd be more than happy to give that to you.
Thank you, Ms. Finnegan, for bringing that to our attention again. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan at this time? Counselor Whiteside.
Ms. Finnegan, how you doing? How did you feel about parking on the side of someone's house? Because a lot of people have boats which they can't park in the street, and they want to park them out on the side or...
I think they addressed that in there, and they allowed that. But when I first came before the council, one of my neighbors had a big, I mean, F-ten pickup truck, and then he had this humongous pressure washing tank. And he parked across the whole front of his house on the lawn. But the, on the side, in fact, Montgomery addressed that. But I'm talking right on the front, right on the front.
In the grass.
Yeah. Okay?
I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you know who enforces that? Is it the police officers taking it, or is it code enforcement?
Oh, what, how Montgomery enforces it?
Yeah, right.
I'll have to read that and look. I, I don't know.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And it's probably in the ordinance itself. Yeah, so I have no idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Finnegan.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on any item? Mayor, you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. If I might extend my point, please.
Yes, sir.
That's David Porter, come up. Parks and Rec's director. He wasn't here, he was from his folk, I mentioned about his family and his kids. He was actually late because he was dealing with city kids. And anyway, good seeing you again.
Good seeing you.
Good evening. This is David. We are so excited to have him.
Good evening. This is David. We are so excited to have him. He brings a wealth of knowledge for our children. He oversees our summer camps, our after-school programs, and he's developing new programs to reach out to the kids in our community. So we're really excited to have him here. And I know he was upset for being late, but unfortunately, sometimes parents don't always come and pick up just exactly when they're supposed to get there, but we'll forgive them this time.
I was just about to say real quick, thank everybody for this great opportunity and I'm excited and proud to be a part of the City of Prattville family and look forward to a long-lasting relationship with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Very much.
Mayor, you have anything further?
I'd just like to say thank you to this council, but also to the, all of our city employees, all their hard, dedicated work. And I mentioned earlier with the LPGA program, there's a lot of volunteers and I think that's something this area is really blessed of because of all the volunteerism and patriotism that we have here. But all of the actions here just really make me proud to be a Prattvillian, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think I did hear you mention that you would be, that you would be passing each council member a copy of the proposed budget. I want to thank everyone for coming. I also appreciate what the, the, the employees are doing as well as the council. I know some of you, I mean, all of you all have worked with your committees and I urge you to continue to do that as we get this budget. I'm sure you'll be making some calls. And since the mayor has it ready to give to us tonight, I'm gonna go ahead and call a work session that will give us a week to look at it. We're gonna have a work session on Tuesday, the eighth, at three-thirty p.m. to discuss this. And if we can get everything ironed out, hopefully pass it before the October one fiscal, I believe. Yes, sir. We're gonna have a work session here, as we did before, in these chambers. If that's not a conflict, if it's a conflict, Kathy will let us know. Again, thank you all. We hope everyone have a safe journey home. And again, Mayor, thank you for the job that the staff and you and everyone did during the LPGA. It was a great opportunity. I had an opportunity this year to spend a lot of time out there, more so than I have in previous years. With that being said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.